Good evening, welcome to the council meeting of October fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Anyone in the audience who has amplified headphones, please raise your hand and we'll deliver those. Not seeing any, let's rise for the pledge fleet.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Do a roll call, please.
Yes, I will. Councilmember Blush.
Here.
Councilmember Sterns.
Here.
Councilmember Gilmar.
Here.
Mayor Onisco.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Sherman.
Here.
Councilmember South.
Here.
And Councilmember Gutierrez.
Here.
Thank you, Daniel. Does the council have any late changes to the agenda? City manager?
Not at time, Mr. Renn.
All right. Any board reports to share? Right. Has everyone read the consent agenda? Is there a motion?
Need to approve the consent agenda as read.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Uh, we need to read.
I know.
Okay.
I, because we changed that. Maybe have a reading of this consent agenda, please.
Yes, we have vouchers numbered one-one-one, six through six, six-three-six, three-one-one-one, six-seven-seven, and EFT payment numbers six-eight-six through seven-oh-five in the total amount of one hundred and sixty-six thousand, one hundred and sixty-one dollars and seventy-seven cents. Payroll warrants numbered three-nine-nine-nine and one-three-three-four-eight through one-three-four-four-six and one-one-one-six-two-zero through one-one-one-six-three-two in the amount of three hundred and sixty-six thousand, seven hundred and four dollars and eighty-six cents. Vouchers numbered one-one-one, seven-oh-one through one-one-one-seven-three-four and EFT payment numbers seven-oh-six through seven-twenty-eight in the total amount of one hundred and eighty-four thousand, eight hundred and sixty-one dollars and twenty cents. Payroll warrants numbered four-zero-zero-zero through four-zero-zero-three and one-three-four-four-seven through one-three-five-four-nine and one-one-one-six-seven-eight through one-one-one-six-nine-six in the amount of five hundred and twenty-two thousand, nine hundred and fifty-nine dollars and sixty cents and the minutes from the study session of September tenth, two thousand and twenty-four.
Thank you, Daniel. Now is there a motion to?
Move to approve the consent agenda as read.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda as read. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. The council invites the public to make comments on matters of city business. Comments shall be made to the entire council, not the individual council members. Please refrain from any personal or disrespectful remarks that create disruption of the meeting. If unreasonable disruptive conduct continues, you'll be asked to leave the meeting. Danielle, anyone sign up for general public comment?
Yes, we do. Our first speaker is Monty Ritter.
Appreciate this. Hello, my name is Monty Ritter. I, uh, I'm a resident of Shelton, just outside of the city limits in the Shelton River and Gulf area. And, uh, what I've been doing is back in two thousand and five, because I receive, uh, city services, I, I get city water, I was allowed to sit on the city, uh, parks, uh, citizens advisory committee. And, uh, back in two thousand and five, we put together your city comprehensive plan for the Parks Department and with, uh, with our city parks manager, Mark Ziegler. And in our, uh, parks plan, the, uh, we put out a nice survey. We requested, uh, uh, comments back from the people in the city, uh, Shelton. And, and the most requested trail was a trail between the high school, the Mason County High School and the, and, and the Mason County recreational area. Um, we, we, we had this big request from the people in, in Shelton, um, to get this, the kids off of the side of John's Berry Road on, on their pathway between the high school and the, uh, and the Mason County recreational area. We weren't able to do that. I, I joined the, I sat on the, uh, Mason County Park Department, uh, park board in two thousand and nine. And our most requested trail was a trail between city of Shelton and Belfair. And we tried really hard, um, and basically, we really started from the Belfair side, heading south towards Allen, and that didn't really work out. And that was kind of difficult, but this is around two thousand and nineteen, uh, two thousand and sixteen. We weren't able to get this completed. But we, we, we really tried and it was a big part of, uh, of what people in Mason County and in Shelton wanted. Um, unfortunately, the Mason County Park Department dropped the, 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 from its comp plan, they, we dropped the component of going from Shelton to Belfair because we weren't successful. And because we don't have that component in our Mason County Comprehensive Parks Plan, we do not have access to a lot of, but funding that's out there that we could use to, to complete a portion of a trail from Shelton to Belfair, which would be Shelton to the Mason County recreational area. Just, we need the language on the Mason County comp plan so that we could have access to this funding, so we could use it to, to complete a trail from Shelton to the Mason County recreational area.
Thank you, Monty. Thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead and email us, uh, the rest if you'd like.
I appreciate that, if I may.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
We have Ted Kiliman. I'm sorry if I said that wrong.
My name is Ted Kellner and I live upon Capitol Hill as well. Is it possible to allow my time to be given to the party?
No, we don't do that, sorry.
Pardon? Well, if that were possible, good. I'd like to be able to do this and comprehensive, finish off our conversation. Thank you, Bill, for your time. I appreciate that. You guys have been wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Susan Kirchhoff.
Good evening, council members. I'm Susan Kirchhoff, Executive Director of the Youth Connection, providing services to young people twelve to twenty-four. Um, every day I come across challenges within our demographic, addressing the growing need for affordable housing, access to treatment centers and mental health support. As a person who has experienced homelessness on three different occasions, as well as housing instability as an adult, I recognize the absolute necessity to address this growing issue within our community. Just this week, we had three individuals we had to call nine-one-one on who were ODing in our center. Just today, Commerce released the Washington State Five-Year Homeless Housing Strategic Plan, which shares many great focuses, which include increasing the number of permanent housing units across the state, ensuring statewide homeless crisis system is in, is high performing, has accountability and is transparent, expanding connections and coordination between the systems to include behavioral health organizations, jails, prisons, and of course, youth services. Involving individuals with lived experience in the process and learning how best to work with and improve the situation within our unhoused population. They know what works and we should listen to them. As we look at the situation in our community, I'm actually kind of excited about the opportunities um, that we have to work with and improve our system. Just last week, I was asked and agreed to consult with Community Lifeline. My main goal is to provide guidance and opportunities to improve and change the environment, both inside and outside of their building. We have already agreed to some changes which will be put in place by November first. I'm excited at the opportunity to support them, help them, because they are a much needed organization in our community. Where else are we to put our unhoused individuals? I have heard rumbling about a town meeting and I would appreciate the opportunity to have a constructive and beneficial conversation, to find a solution which provides dignity and respect for all the individuals involved. I just want to remind everyone here, the majority of our unhoused individuals did not wake up one morning and decide, today, I'm gonna choose to be homeless. It does not work that way. Just like in my own situation, each time I was homeless, it was out of my control and it was devastating. I just want to encourage us to think about that as we moving forward and we're dealing with our unhoused population. And I want to, on a brief moment, say I'm really, uh, in appreciative of this trail opportunity, so I'm gonna be involved in that too. Thanks.
Thank you, Susan.
Up next, we have Tamara Ingwoldson.
Good evening, Mayor, good evening, Mayor, and all the council members. Thank you for this opportunity to share some information with you. And, um, keep up the energy. She's a great partner. Um, my name is Tamara Ingwoldson. I live in Lake Limerick, but I work for New Horizon Communities and we provide permanent supportive housing and part of that program is the Shelton Veterans Village. And I wanted to come here today to invite you to our ribbon cutting. On October thirtieth, we will be having a ribbon cutting for our solar panels that have been installed. All three villages will now have solar panels and solar power. Um, we're inviting you to this event on the thirtieth from eleven AM to twelve PM. We'll have some light refreshments and one of the cool factoids is the installation of the solar panels at this one particular village will save more than a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars over thirty years. And that savings from the solar energy will help be able to be redirected into programs and services and the intern opportunities that we provide for people working on their masters in behavioral health. So that way, we're helping to train up behavioral health providers who are stronger and have a more depth and breadth to their skill sets when they come out into the community to be your therapist. But at the same time, it allows us the opportunity to meet our residents where they are and bring services to them that can be consistent, create that level of trust, that opportunity for people to really be in relationship as they work on their programs and themselves. So again, wanted to invite you to the ribbon cutting on October thirtieth and thank you again for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Tamara.
Up next, we have Dean Jewitt.
Good morning. Got a lot to cover, three minutes to do it. Uh, I want to chat about your guys' new revised, uh, they have to sign before you can speak. Uh, you can't address an individual person. I want to make sure and bring to your, your, uh, attention, three lawsuits, uh, that the citizens were able to sue the city for just that reason, the mayor trying to throw people out. The city of East Point had settled a lawsuit with four individuals that they had to pay seventeen thousand, nine hundred and ten dollars and basically list, uh, August sixth as a, uh, First Amendment Rights Day. Uh, another one in Surprise, Arizona, where the mayor had a woman thrown out and had her arrested for trespassing. Lawsuit there. Who won? The citizen. Uh, Cleveland, Ohio, Ohio, the mayor warns he would cut the mic for insults, uh, the character of an official. Uh, basically, you, you're talking about your First Amendment and your Fourteenth Amendment. I'll send these to you, Mark, so you can take a look at them. Uh, so if I address you personally, I'm gonna do it. If you want to throw me out, I guess we're heading down lawsuit. Uh, affordable housing that you guys talked about at your study session, some very unprofessional behavior. Uh, there was an individual, ID the mayor, that said that maybe everybody should go shop in Oregon instead. Okay, uh, very unprofessional. There was another individual that said, let's tax them to the max. I'll, I'll, I'll speed ahead, uh, and another individual that supported it. Uh, there was individuals that supported not taking it to a vote of the people and just doing it as a, uh, as a, as a council. So we're talking about, you know, raising taxes to the tune of six hundred and seventeen thousand under one plan, hundred and sixty-seven on another plan, uh, three hundred and ten on another plan. Since when does the city get into the business of running a mitigation site or doing construction on a site? I, I know, it's, it's, it's irresponsible in my opinion. Uh, we're talking about, uh, we can't even, can't even run the ordinances that we already have on the books. We have RVs and campers that have been cruising through town for a year. Where do they defecate? Where do they urinate? Okay, so you call them in, what do they do? They move around the block. If you look at the ordinance, it doesn't matter where they move. It doesn't start to clock over again. And if they pop their hood up, that doesn't matter. They're not broke down. Uh, the city, basically, you know, there's the, uh, uh, the case that just went to the Supreme Court. Uh, Mark Ziegler's quoted several times. Uh, it's not necessary to fix this through the court system. Uh, well, what is it? If we keep doing what we've always done, we're gonna keep getting what we've, what we've got, what we got don't work. So why can't we take a change and look at something else and see what that does? And why, why do we have to worry about, uh, you know, one set of a population, but we don't have to worry about our businesses? Who pays the taxes? Who pays your guys the salaries? Who has the, who, who gives you the money to have the city run? Thank you.
Thank you, Dean. Monty.
Oh.
We have one more speaker on Zoom, Dave Redman.
Hi, Dave.
He's, he's on mute.
Dave, you're on mute.
You might be outside too.
There we go. There we go. Okay, good evening, everybody. I'm sorry, I had technical problems. Uh, my name's Dave Redman. I'm a retired army officer and I'm program supervisor at Shelton Veterans Village. Uh, I do, uh, good news and bad news. Uh, my comments tonight will take far less than three minutes. Uh, the bad news is there's gonna be a little bit of a number stump and I apologize for that, but thank you in advance for bearing with me. Uh, recently, the Addictions Drug and Alcohol Institute conducted an anonymous survey with our residents and many others in support of living facilities across the state of Washington as well. I was provided a courtesy copy of how the results stacked up against the rest of the state. And I'd like to take a moment just to share those results with you and let you know how special the, the village is and what amazing job the case managers there are doing with our veterans. Uh, zero Shelton Veterans Village participants reported legal drug use in the past while they've been living there, compared with forty-three percent of participants statewide. Zero Shelton Veterans Village participants said there was a lot of drug use in the program, compared with fifty percent of participants statewide. Ninety percent of our veterans that participated felt that they had friends in the building they think they spent time with, compared with seventy-five, seventy-four percent of participants statewide. Eighty percent of our veterans felt supported by staff in accomplishing their goals, compared with sixty-six of the, of participants statewide. And one hundred percent of veterans that lived in Shelton Veterans Village said they were very likely to ask staff for help when witnessing an opioid overdose, compared with seventy-nine percent of participants statewide. Now, what that means is the veterans that are living in our better, in our village are refraining from drug use, uh, unlike many other ones around the, around the state. Uh, they feel supported, they feel secure, and they're rebuilding their lives. They're becoming taxpaying citizens. Uh, and they are becoming benefits in the community. Uh, I want everyone to see that this village has had a very direct and positive impact on our residents. And those positive benefits will transfer directly to reduce public displays, reduce first responder calls, reduce emergency room visits, and reduce taxpayer costs. Uh, and I'd also like to take a moment while I have the forum, uh, to mention that we conduct tours of our village to inform and educate those that are curious about the people we house and help reduce some of the rumors I've heard floating around town about our organization and our residents. Uh, as always, thank you for your service and your support to the communities that you serve. That's all.
Thank you, Dave.
That's all.
That was all. All right. Next on the agenda is a presentation from Finance Director Mike Givens.
Thank you, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and members of council. I am going to present the August financial report. We skipped a month last month, but we're gonna be heavy into budget for the next few meetings. So let me start with where we're at here on the about sixty-seven percent of the fiscal year through August. Um, we're in the final stages of prepping the two thousand and twenty-five budget that will go out to you in packet in about another week and a half. We'll have a public hearing on November fifth to look at the full budget. I'm gonna focus a bit here on the general fund in the beginning. Um, we use a good amount of what's in this report to estimate where the funds are going to be at year end so that we know where that starting place is going to be, not just in the general fund, but all of the other funds, the enterprise funds, to know what our capacity is within those budgets. Want to draw your attention to the August numbers on, on this page. You'll notice that the revenues are estimated to exceed, um, where we had it budgeted. So I'm looking at this line up here where it's sixteen, just over sixteen million, fifty-eight thousand. We had, uh, budgeted fifteen point four million. So again, it's about six hundred thousand over. Some of that, um, is just simply due to revenue we didn't anticipate. Uh, we have a contract for the designated crisis responder that, um, wasn't budgeted because of the time the budget was presented. We didn't know we'd have that. That was some unanticipated revenue. It's really in and out. It's revenue in and then we're spending it on the expense side of things. Um, we had some revenue from a Department of Justice bulletproof grant. Um, bulletproof best grant that we received, um, and some other unanticipated grant revenue. So that's largely why that area, um, is over budget. Um, another area that we're projecting will be over budget is miscellaneous revenue. A lot of that is due to the opioid settlement, um, money that we've received this year. And then, um, I guess in a positive light, our investment interest, um, due to the local government investment pool, um, bringing back really unprecedented returns again, um, at least before the Fed lowered the rate a bit, which will affect it slightly. Um, our investment interest is well over where we budgeted. So that's largely why the revenue is exceeding. Um, it's certainly not a bad thing, but that's, um, just to explain to you and the public why we're over budget on that amount. Um, our goal is to match ongoing expenses with ongoing revenue as much as possible and then clearly explain where one-time expenses are attributed to one-time revenues. So those grants, um, I bring this up because we'll talk about it quite a bit in the budget process as we're making some recommendations to use one-time revenues. But in this case, that's what happened there. We have some one-time monies coming in. Um, some of these things we're also, um, going to be reconciling in the year-end, um, uh, budget update for two thousand and twenty-four. We have some unanticipated revenues, in particular, some grants in the enterprise funds where we need to do that supplemental budget for two thousand and twenty-four to reconcile some of that. Others, we're not going to really worry with because it's revenue in and revenue out. Um, nobody penalizes us for going over budget on revenue. It's really on expenses. We have to make sure we don't go over that amount you authorized for us. And we won't. If you'll notice on the expense line here, um, we're estimating expenses at just over fifteen point three million and our budget authorization is, um, fifteen point five million. So that side of things is looking good. And again, this is where we're estimating it in August. Some things can change. Uh, I don't anticipate expenses to go up much, um, but they certainly could change over the course of the last quarter of the year. Um, on, let me scroll down to, um, page five where we show that month-to-month comparison of the general fund. Oops, I'm worried. Okay, there it comes in. This is a good page really to look at, I think, on revenues. And I pointed this out before, um, so that you can see where were we in August of two thousand and twenty-three, so one year ago. And if you take a look at things, it really comes down to, um, most of our revenue sources match pretty darn closely. Um, I think this goes to the point that our general fund revenue sources just don't change a lot. The one line you'll notice that is, uh, fairly significant increase is that business and occupation tax because that rate was increased. So that comparison from August twenty-four to August twenty-three shows just over three hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollar increase. Um, and if you remember, throughout this year, I've mentioned, we'll probably be under budget on the BNO tax. We're now estimating, and you'll notice on here, that we'll probably reach full budget on that. So as we get better numbers, we're really able to predict a little bit more. And then you see some of those other lines where I was, um, mentioning where we're estimating towards the bottom of the revenue section, miscellaneous revenue. It's up quite a bit. About a hundred thousand dollars of that, quite honestly, is the investment interest that we've got better returns on than we anticipated. So that's really a good page to look at. You'll notice property tax, it just does not very much from year to year. Sales and use tax really hangs in there about the same. So most of our revenue lines are pretty consistent with some slight increases where there are, um, natural kind of adjustments. On the expense side, you can look down and see where we're anticipating different departments to be slightly over or under budget. Um, these are, of course, a little bit difficult sometimes to predict because again, we're estimating this as of August. We don't always know necessarily what's going to happen, but assuming all things stay equal, that's where we're at. And it's looking, I think, pretty good. Um, we're expanding the budget, but not at a rate that would bring about concern from our perspective. So that's a good kind of comparison and match for the general fund month-over-month and year, year-to-year. I'm gonna go down to page seven where we have the fund balances. This is what directors and, um, in particular, us in finance are using as we estimate fund balances. This is back as of August for budget purposes. We're running it really, um, as of today to try to make sure that where we're going to end up with these funds. In other words, what projects did we maybe not get to that we thought we were that were budgeted? So we have an accurate picture of that ending fund balance going into two thousand and twenty-five so that we're able to plan the projects that are necessary to execute the functions of the city across all of our funds. So the general fund leads off at the top, but then followed by all of the rest of our funds. I pointed this out before too, on that estimated fund balance column, we want to see things in the positive. Everything should be ending the fiscal year positive, not negative, and everything is. Um, there's a lot going on. You'll notice some of the, um, funds are drawn down due to a lot of the projects that are happening. So that's a good thing to see. At the bottom of the page are the FTEs. We track this. Um, we're a slight, well, there was one position filled in police. So there were four point five vacancies in the general fund at the end of July and, um, it's down to three point five because an officer was, um, hired. So that's a great thing to see. Um, so the overall went from seven and a half to six and a half. And then the rest of the financial report, um, shows our just citywide fund-to-fund comparisons. But I'll end there and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Mike? Questions for Mark? Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Right, next. Only business item we have is an LTAC recommendations by the city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Council. Uh, tonight bringing to you recommendations from the lodging tax advisory committee. Uh, the city called for applications for, let's refer to those LTAC, LTAC funds. Uh, back in September, uh, the LTAC committee met, um, to review the applications and provide the recommendations to council. Um, per RCW, the council can consider, uh, the applications or the actual funding allocations from the committee, um, as a whole or partial, but cannot, uh, change each allocation or individual allocations. Uh, you'll see on the first page, uh, there was about ninety-seven thousand dollars granted last year. The actual will be about eighty-one thousand dollars as there was two projects that were not completed and were due their projects. Uh, this year, there were twelve total projects submitted, eleven recommended for funding, uh, for a total of ninety-seven. uh, for a total of ninety-seven thousand dollars. Uh, so this uses, um, reserves uh, to fund these, uh, fund these projects in twenty-twenty-five.
Do we have a motion? All right, any more comments or questions? I'm sorry, any more comments or questions? We have a motion in second to place Lodging Tax Advisory Committee recommendations on the action agenda for November fifth, twenty-twenty-four, council meeting. All in favor, say aye. Aye, vote, motion carries. First item on the action agenda is an update about the AMI project. Capital Project Manager Aaron Nix has details. Good evening, Aaron.
Counsel, appreciate your time. Uh, I apologize if I sounded off. I'm a little bit under the weather, but I'm doing the best that I can. I know that this is not a popular project, uh, for some folks, um, mainly because of the expense. Um, and I get that. Um, I want the council to be aware that all utilities are going through the exact same thing. Because the reality is that all utilities use mechanical meters in the past. And have moved forward, uh, with replacing those, uh, with these, these digital smart meters. As I mentioned at our last meeting on September eighteenth, we, we had a bid open for this project. The bids ranged from nine hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars to two point seven nine million dollars. Um, we received a total of nine. The low bid, uh, was with Keystone Utility Systems for nine hundred and forty-seven thousand, one, uh, five hundred and seventy-one dollars and fifty-seven cents. Um, again, Keystone Utility Systems, they are an out-of-state vendor, uh, contractor, but they have done jobs in the city of L V, in the city of West Los Angeles, which we made contact with them as we, we did our due diligence here. Um, so they, they are absolutely the low bidder. Um, for the council's reference, I know there was, uh, at least I heard, um, I kind of wanted just to give you a little bit of background. The reality is that the city, and not me, uh, but previous staff have been working on this project for four plus years. With COVID and what happened to that, ships, um, it was delayed for some time. As I mentioned, our Public Works Department started evaluating this, uh, four plus years ago. We looked at all different types of water meters and chose the Census I Pearl meter for a couple reasons. A question that I think people want to know about, um, is the city aware of any past issues with the Census I Pearl meters? Meaning in industry, have there been issues? According to Census, they resolved an issue causing their meters to malfunction in two thousand and sixteen and two thousand and seventeen. And their meter failure rate since two thousand and seventeen is nearly zero. Um, this statement is supported by, uh, sample testing of, uh, new meters being installed. Uh, a lot of jurisdictions did that, um, to verify the results and came out good. Um, so I just wanted to paint a little bit about that with regard to the issue in two thousand and sixteen and seventeen. There was an inappropriate seal and water got into the system. They corrected that, um, and um, just so folks know, their product is guaranteed for twenty years of use. So I just want to make folks aware of that. There's also been some questions, and I didn't hear that from, just from anybody specifically with regard, with regard to these water meters, uh, the metering system and the potential or viability, um, to hacking and other interference in the modern water metering, metering process. I will say that Census is an industry leader in this area, um, and they were, we chose them because they were durable, their ease of use, and the protections that they actually have in place in their system. As I indicated, the council at our last meeting, this decision wasn't taken lightly and we discussed, uh, this at length when, uh, selecting the actual system went to. I was actually, actually able to reach out to Census. And I asked them the questions, uh, about security and the ability to hack into the new metering system. Here's what the response was, and I'm gonna read it verbatim because it's not my word. So, um, the radio technology Census uses in, in the FlexNet system operates in a licensed radio frequency, which is dedicated to the utility. So you get that as part of purchasing that. It's a dedicated private, uh, frequency that you utilize. Um, this provides significant legal protections because anyone without a license cannot legally transmit in this radio frequency. And, um, a- attempt to send their own data. I think it goes both ways. Some of the other things that I learned is the data that they do transmit. It's typically, you can adjust the frequencies and the times that do that, usually six times a day. Um, but that's shooting out that information. It's encrypted, meaning that people can't take it and steal it and start using it and changing and manipulating it. The various components of the system are segmented into separate security domains. This provides a layered approach to security and with security methods and processes are implemented through a combination of proprietary and third-party security controls, ensuring confidentiality. Talk about encryption, that's, that's included integrity, authenticate, authentication, and availability, um, and that has to pertain to redundancy and resiliency of the system. These are really good systems and hard to hack. So, um, I just want to kind of bring that to council's attention. See, another thing I just want to just briefly touch on, a significant FlexNet component, again, FlexNet is part of the Census system, um, is a network regional interface, an R and I, and I, there would be, I'm not an expert in this either, uh, and I'll, I'll help try to explain it. Which incorporates a dedicated industry standard high-security module, AS, HSM, to provide key storage. AS, HSMs provide both logical and physical protection of high-value cryptographic key materials from non-authorized users and potential adversaries. The data is protected, it's encrypted, they can't get it. So there has been not, and I, when I did search on Google, has there been any history of this that has occurred? And I have not seen that with the Census I Pearl, um, system. So just wanted to make that, you guys aware of that. Obviously, open to additional questions. But with this, we're asking the council to award Public Works contracts, Keystone Utility Systems in the amount not to exceed nine hundred and forty-seven thousand, five hundred and seventy-one dollars and fifty-seven cents.
Thank you, Aaron. Daniel, any other public comment?
No, Mr. Mayor.
We have a reading of Resolution Number one, three, four, zero, dash, zero, six, two, four.
Resolution one, three, four, zero, dash, zero, six, two, four. A resolution of the Council of the City of Shelton, Washington, authorizing the city manager to approve a public works contract with Keystone Utility Systems in order to construct the city water meter replacement project.
Thank you. We have a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt Resolution Number one, three, four, zero, dash, zero, six, two, four, presented.
All right, commerce of questions?
I just wanted to say thank you for thinking about the extra steps that might happen in case we are hacked because there was an incident physically here with the city council meeting. And thank you for thinking about things I might not have thought about, the extra measures that we go to take care of our water and our building. And I, I've really been here for, you know, since the past three years. We've been wanting to upgrade and make sure that we take our people out of the field and get them back doing stuff in the office and other things. Instead of going out metering, we can decide anyway. So through scale and efficiency, and we're force multiplying by doing this. So, um, thank you all for choosing a good system that has backups and security. And I'm very comfortable sending this forward and making sure that we have secure water systems in the future.
Thank you. Anybody else? This, I have no questions. This is years in the making. We've been working on this for, what, maybe four years now? So I'm glad it's coming fruition. So we have a motion in second to approve Resolution Number one, three, four, zero, dash, zero, six, two, four, presented. All in favor, say aye. Aye, post. Motion carries. Our last item is a resolution for ILA with Mason County Superintendent Brent Armstrong to detail.
Evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Council. Uh, bringing forward a inter-local agreement with Mason County for reimbursable works, compliance, and services. So this is, um, been updating in a, uh, past I L A thing that we have with Mason County. Uh, gives us the ability to share equipment with Mason County on items that we may not have. Um, they have bigger pieces of equipment for rollers and um, utilizing, uh, work dump trucks if needed, um, and the equipment in that nature. Um, we are able to do small projects with this, uh, not lasting more than a day. Usually just, uh, smaller end project for bigger projects have to take a separate agreement. Over the day project. We also are able to use their fuel, fueling, uh, station at the heavy shop. So something goes, variety of cars, you can go up there. Gives us some redundancy in that, and also shop services. So there's some specialized equipment that they have.
Thank you, Brent. Does anyone have a public comment?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Never reading of Resolution Number one, three, five, one, dash, zero, nine, two, four.
Resolution Number one, three, five, one, dash, zero, nine, two, four. A resolution of the Council of the City of Shelton, Washington, authorizing the city manager to sign an interlocal agreement with Mason County for the exchange of equipment and small public works services.
Thank you, Danielle. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve Resolution Number one, three, five, one, dash, zero, nine, two, four, presented.
Right, commerce of questions?
Wanted to talk about how I like how we're setting the precedent for cooperation with the, with the county and how we're complementing each other with our strengths. Like we are, um, relying on economies of scale to help ourselves be more efficient government. And that I would like to continue with a lot of these, um, very low agreements. And that we have a good relationship with the county and all the different areas throughout, especially during the season when we're gonna have a lot of weather events and things that are going on. That we are fishing for our needs to get to, um, as soon as possible. So that'd be very much for the county and making this process easy and smooth.
Right, any more comments or questions? Again, I, I, uh, it's always nice to work with our county partners. Um, right, we have motion in the second to waive the three-touch rule to approve Resolution Number one, three, five, one, dash, zero, nine, two, four, presented. All in favor, say aye. Aye, post. Motion carries. Mark, do you have a report tonight?
You know, just one thing I wanted to mention tonight. The leaves are falling. You can see them drug inside, uh, inside the building here. Um, and as I drove down the street the other day, I, I saw somebody blowing their leaves out into the street. Um, it might seem innocuous, but during this time of year, those compounded leaves can plug up drains, lead to flooding and things like that. I, I just want to bring that to, I think, the council's attention, the public's attention. That, um, if we can, you know, we can refrain from that, um, it'll help alleviate some of the concerns, some of the problems and flooding that we have. Um, help us out when it becomes quite rainy, which we'll see it. There before long, clear out a drain, don't blow the, the leaves out in the street. Maybe help us out with, uh, some of the damages that occur on a regular basis or on an annual basis at times around particularly some of our, our problem location. Uh, the crews will get out on the streets and sweep them as fast as they can. Um, but it doesn't happen on a daily basis. So as much of that debris we can keep out of our right to ways and into our storm drains, the better and help each other out.
If you have neighbors that they really like something ground covered for the winter, let them know.
Yeah.
They'll come and pick them up. So, um, that's my suggestion.
Is that it for your report?
That's it.
Anybody have any questions for, for Mark? No? Does the council have any new items for discussion? All right. Our next meeting is Tuesday, November fifth, twenty twenty-four at six P M. We also have a study session October twenty-seventh at six P M. This meeting is adjourned at six forty-four P M.